Everyone, this is the Wednesday, September 13th, 2023 afternoon session of the Portland City Council. Good afternoon, Kealan. Please call the roll.
Good afternoon, Gonzalez.
Here.
Maps.
Here.
Rubio.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Wheeler.
Here. And now we'll hear from legal counsel on the rules of order and decorum. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Portland City Council. To testify before council in person or virtually, you must sign up in advance on the council agenda at www-portland.gov/council/agenda. Information on engaging with city council can be found on the council clerk's webpage. The presiding officer preserves order and decorum during city council meetings. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. A timer will indicate when your time is done. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If you cause a disruption, a warning will be given. Further disruption will result in ejection from the meeting. Anyone who fails to leave once ejected is subject to arrest for trespass. Additionally, council may take a short recess and reconvene virtually. Your testimony today should address the matter being considered when testifying. State your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Disclose if you're a lobbyist. If you are a public organization, please identify it. For testifiers joining virtually, please unmute yourself once the council clerk calls your name. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we have two items today that will be read together. They are both non-emergency ordinances, so we will not be voting today. Kealan, could you read 777 and 778 together, please?
Item 777, amend Title 33, Planning and Zoning, and the zoning map to reduce the impacts of future flooding on the city and prevent the degradation of floodplain habitat for endangered and threatened fish species. Item 778, amend Flood Hazard Areas Code to comply with Federal Emergency Management Agency National Flood Insurance Program requirements and modify compensatory excavation and removal requirements.
Colleagues, today we're hearing two continued items from the August 30th council session. One ordinance amends the zoning code Title 33, and the other amends the building code Title 24. The building code amendments are not land use regulations, but for the purposes of efficiency, we're going to consider the items together. On August 30th, staff provided an overview of the two proposals. We heard public testimony, and Commissioner Rubio introduced a package of amendments which are currently on the table. We'll refer to that package as Rubio Number One. Today, we're back to hear additional amendments and take a vote on all of the proposed amendments. We will not be taking a final vote on the ordinances today. I'll provide more information on the next steps as we get to the end of the meeting. As a reminder, the oral and written record are currently closed. I'll now pass it to Commissioner Rubio to walk us through this afternoon session. Commissioner Rubio?
Thank you, Mayor. As a reminder, the proposals in front of us today are the result of many years of conversations between multiple bureaus and stakeholders about how to manage the city's floodplains and update regulations for new development in the floodplain in the central city and other areas. These changes are important to bring Portland's regulations into compliance with federal fish habitat regulations, to advance the city's climate resiliency goals, and to ensure that the properties in the floodplain remain eligible for federal flood insurance. The staff recommendation aims to balance the need to address these issues while also recognizing the importance of building housing and future economic development in the existing areas that allow for development. Today, we will then walk through a few new potential amendments from myself and Commissioner Maps. All of the new amendments were included in the clerk's Tuesday memo and posted on BPS's project webpage in advance. Following our discussion and deliberation, we'll vote on all of the amendments. The record will remain closed. But first, we will hear a brief presentation from BPS staff, whom I've asked to pull together some information in response to some of the testimony we received last time we met. So Jeff and Patricia, welcome.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Commissioner, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm going to hand it over to Jeff Cottle, who will be providing the presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor and Commissioners, thank you again for having us here. My name is Jeff Cottle, environmental planner at the Bureau of Planning Sustainability, and I've been working on the Floodplain Resilience Plan, managing that project for now a couple of years. Just a little bit about the topics we expect to discuss today. Before we get into the details of some of those potential amendments, we wanted to follow up to respond to some of the comments we had heard at the, both in written and oral testimony for the August 30th, at the August 30th hearing. The two items we're briefly going to discuss, and we'll open it for questions afterwards. The first is really the different components of the biological opinion, or what are called the elements of the biological opinion, and then how they are incorporated into the proposals we have before you. And then the second is a little bit more on the phasing of the implementation of the work plan. That came up a couple of times, and we just want to provide a little bit more clarity on that. So the first topic is really about the different components of biological opinion. So in testimony we received, there have been some requests to implement the biological opinions interim measures right now. In response to those requests, we wanted to provide some additional information on the different components of the BiOP directives and how they have informed our proposals. The directives of the BiOP are contained in what is called the Reasonable and Prudent Alternative, in what's shown here on the slide. It contains six elements, and those six elements are the way in which the National Marine Fish Service directed FEMA to make sure that they are compliant with Endangered Species Act. Though the elements are directed at FEMA, many of them require a response from participating jurisdictions like the city of Portland, since we ultimately approve or deny development in the floodplain, and then also we must meet these minimum criteria to continue to have access to the National Flood Insurance Program. So today, we'll talk about elements two and three, and in more detail in just one second. Then element four, just for your reference, is FEMA's long-term, is focused on FEMA's long-term compliance with the Endangered Species Act through changes that will be included in its final implementation plan, which is expected to be completed in March 2025, which we mentioned last time. After the release of the implementation plan, participating jurisdictions are expected to have 18 to 24 months to come into compliance. Our overall work plan is really designed to ensure compliance with that final implementation plan. So element two, which has been referenced in a number of the testimony that we received, is really, in that element two, it was identified, immediate actions were identified for FEMA to take to reduce the impacts on threatened endangered fish species while FEMA staff were working on that long-term strategy that we talked about in element four. These actions were actually expected to be implemented within 18 months of the release of the biological opinion, but Congress gave FEMA a three-year extension for implementation of the biological opinion guidance, and so FEMA really turned its focus to developing that long-term compliance strategy. So they did release a draft implementation plan in October of 2021, which is currently going through National Environmental Policy Review, Department of National Environmental Policy Act review. But that 2020, October 2021 strategy did lay out the different, their compliance, what they expect to be their compliance options, and it draws significantly on those interim measures. So the interim measures, as is shown here on the slide, really provided sort of prescriptive guidance on tree and vegetation management, which is what we're doing in a lot of, in the updates to the environmental overlay zones that we've talked about, directives for improvement to habitat nearest the waterway, which is what we are referring to as the apparent buffer area requirements, and then also had specific ratios for ensuring flood storage capacity would be maintained with development in the floodplain, and that's the Title 24 component. So the directives of element two have been, and they serve as the foundation for our proposed changes to both the zoning code and the building regulations, and in many cases are incorporated directly from the interim strategies, interim measures. So we also wanted to highlight element three because, as you know, we are doing, we've, there were some, we're updating the 1996 in the Central and South Reach, the 1996 flood area that we currently regulate, and a number of the comments questioned the 1996 as a basis for our protections. So element three, although again focused on FEMA's maps, really did say that FEMA's maps are not being updated appropriately or consistently enough, and that they need to do better. And we have worked with FEMA to try, and to try to advocate for the development of a new FEMA 100-year floodplain. Unfortunately, based on those conversations, it's about a five or seven-year process to do that, to finalize that new FEMA 100-year floodplain. So in the meantime, we work, the city Bureau of Environmental Services primarily, worked with the US Army Corps of Engineers to model the impacts of a 1996-like flood. And then that, that new model takes into account current development and river characteristics. So it really brings it to what is currently on the ground. The 1996-like storm is used because it represents the most recent significant storm in the city, and it is a type of storm that we expect to occur more frequently due to climate change. Additionally, the future update to the FEMA 100-year floodplain is expected to likely encompass many of the areas that are in the 1996. So therefore, we think that the 1996 represents a more conservative model for flood risk, and then also it fine-tunes an area that we have already been regulating since 2000 as a result of metro requirements. So then, now moving on just a little bit more about our work plan phasing, which has also come up a number of times in testimony. So we presented this graphic the last time we were here on August 30th, but, so, a significant portion of the testimony questioned why industrial lands were not included in this package. As we had discussed, our overall approach in the work plan utilizes a phased process to ensure that the biological opinion requirements are applied to all the areas in the city by the compliance deadline, which we expect to be early in 2027. As shown in the slide, future phases of the work will address the industrial areas of the Columbia corridor, which includes the employment areas of North Portland and the Columbia Slough, and between the Columbia Slough and the Columbia River, and then the Willamette River North Reach. All of those are heavily industrialized areas. So a key component of this, a component of this phased approach is addressing these areas as part of the development of an updated economic opportunities analysis, which is required by statewide planning goal nine. So just to kind of give a little bit more context on statewide planning goal nine, goal nine requires that origin jurisdictions ensure they have enough land to accommodate future job growth for over a 20-year period. So the economic opportunities analysis, which is a key component of that, of compliance with goal nine, is the way in which we estimate the demand and supply of industrial and commercial lands over the next 20 years. So the determination of land that is available for these uses takes into account site characteristics and expected development constraints, including any required protections of natural resources in floodplains. As a part of this process, the economic opportunities analysis must consider policy guidance at a variety of levels. The state land use goals, as well as metro's goals and policies, address both environmental resources and economic development. So our own comprehensive plan also includes a range of goals and policies that recognize the importance of both these considerations. Our most recent economic opportunities analysis was completed and adopted in 2016 as a part of the 2035 comprehensive plan, and since that time, unfortunately, my phone is going off at all times for that to happen. Since that time, the available industrial land has been significantly reduced, and to ensure that we stay compliant with goal nine, we need to evaluate potential limitations on industrial lands during the preparation of a new economic opportunities analysis, which has begun. Flood management requirements and other environmental protections, along with a variety of other potential development constraints, will be considered with that new EOA, the Economic Opportunities Analysis. So that economic opportunities analysis is actually expected to come to city council by the end of 2024, to all of you. And with that, we'll open it up to questions of anything else that we can provide clarity on.
Very good. Commissioner Gonzalez?
So with respect to goal nine, what, the gradual evolution of Central East Side District to more diverse uses, right? Traditional warehouse, and I have to think back if there was ever any real light manufacturing there. Is that, do you anticipate, well, one, has that been built into any of these studies thus far by just the change and mix in Central East Side? And if not, how do you anticipate it will impact planning here? And I realize when we talk further up the river, substantial industrial land there, that was excluded from parts of this process, but I'm, but looking at the city as a whole and our stock of land, just, just kind of curious, you know, changes both in Northwest Portland and Central East Side and relative mix, how we think that's going to play out for goal nine in the city?
Good afternoon, Patricia Deefendorf, for the record. Thanks for the question, Commissioner Gonzalez. So just to start out to acknowledge that those, those lands are still employment lands. So for example, the lands that you're referring to in the Central East Side, those are still employment lands. They may not be industrial. They're, I think they're office industrial. They're kind of a combination of office and light industrial. And those changes were made and accounted for in the previous economic opportunities analysis. Going forward, though, as we've expressed, there is going to be some real work ahead of us to look at the more river-adjacent areas that are industrial and consider how these environmental protections and floodplain regulations are going to interact with the availability of land there.
Let me, let me modify the question slightly. So we've seen some interesting mixed use in parts of Central East Side. Some of it's even been, you know, apartments and housing, just depending on where you are. And was that widely foreseen and baked into previous assessments? And do you anticipate it will have any material impact on, on future assessments?
Yes. So those changes did, you're making me recall that on some of the more major corridors, residential was allowed, and outside of those major corridors, the, it was, the residential was not allowed, and it was retained for commercial industrial, light industrial uses. So those considerations, that was factored in, and all of that was analyzed as part of updating both the comprehensive plan and the central city 2035 plan. So in essence, those, those changes are already, they were anticipated, they were planned for, and they've been accounted for. And what we have before us is just further analysis around the industrial lands in particular, which are the most kind of, you know, the scarce, the more scarce. We have a lot of commercial, we have, you know, substantial office. What we're kind of lacking is, is some of the industrial lands. There's more pressure on the industrial lands.
Got it. And it goes one slightly different direction, just, maybe just 10-second reminder on how banking works in, in, you know, in the city. When you're looking at development, someone raised Cedar Mills as a potential area of, you know, if, if our big-term plans there don't work out, would that be a banking opportunity? Just, just the concept and, on a macro level, like how that plays out for our planning?
Can I just clarify, Commissioner Gonzalez, you're talking about mitigation banking, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, well, I can, I certainly will let others speak to it, but mitigation banking, there's just the general concept is that there's a site on which you do substantial floodplain restoration and create habitat and vegetation so that it can help offset impacts of development in other locations where that might not be able to be done on-site.
So from a planning perspective, we've identified some properties that can be utilized for banking when a developer, somebody wants to develop, and that's sort of is absorbing that capacity inside the, in the region?
So those, a mitigation bank has credits that you use, and basically, so that is sort of like how, depending on, on the site that you're proposing to development, you have to have a commensurate, your mitigation is not on-site, but it is off-site, and then there's a ledger that is part of that mitigation bank. And so as those credits are sold, the amount of benefit that is there that can be purchased reduces until there is nothing left. But there's, yes, the mitigation bank has that capacity that then is sort of used to offset development elsewhere.
Last question, and I'll turn over to my colleague. Just to understand, is that banking, what is the geographical proximity required to a project? Can it be anywhere inside the city? And in kind of the reason for thinking about this, since we're doing this in phases, we have, you know, substantial industrial land need, it might be tough, just trying to figure out how this plays out as we're, as we're planning this out, you know, decades in the future?
Yeah, I would say in general, what we're looking to do is, you would have, especially for something like flood storage, which Jason can, can speak to more specifically, but you would have it in the same flood zone. So generally, you can think of it, so for, along the Willamette, for development in the Willamette. Currently, for the zoning code, we do allow through the river overlay zone. You can use these banks if they were available to you. And so it'd need to be in the same zoning overlay zone, but that's basically the Central and South Reach. So you, it's basically what we would expect is the offset would be, the mitigation would be in the flood area and/or in the general vicinity, if you're talking about not just floodplain offset mitigation, but habitat mitigation and things like that. You would expect that it would basically be in the same general area and along the same waterway.
Okay, thank you.
And I do think, I will say that for the future phases for EOA, for the economic opportunities analysis, this is another key part of consideration is where, because the banks on the Willamette wouldn't be able to be used in the Slough, for example, or on the, potentially on the Columbia River. That's still, I guess, somewhat of a question. But, so there's, you would need to have particular banks that are, that serve the specific waterway, where we don't necessarily have them right now, along the Columbia and the Columbia Slough, Columbia River and the Columbia Slough.
I follow the distinction, thank you. So.
No. We do have an expert on mitigation banking here, if we want to dive in more fully, but if we want to just move on, we can just move on.
I've got a couple of questions that I'd like to pose. And first of all, I also want to acknowledge and thank staff who came and visited with me in the interim and answered a bunch of my questions. It's provoked a couple of more. So we heard a lot of testimony last week or two weeks ago, I guess it was, and there were some consistencies in that testimony, and I just want to put on the record some of those questions and maybe get your reactions to some of them. One of the consistent criticisms we heard was that this exempts certain commercial or industrial interests. Is that accurate?
Maybe I can, I can start, and you can jump in, Jeff. So Patricia Deefendorf, for the record. I think the, the common theme of the testimony was that we were exempting the industrial areas. And so I think that's why we wanted to revisit that graphic with the phasing of the work, to indicate that those areas are not exempted per se. They are the subject of future study. So there are, yeah, I think that, that's-
So it's not that we're exempting it. This ordinance, these ordinances do not encompass that question, but that is slated as part of a currently scheduled study that will then come to council. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so you have not ignored that question?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. There were concerns about modeling off of 1996's flood experience here in the city of Portland. And I think it would be helpful for you to just mention what we discussed with regard to using the 1996 modeling. It was suggested, I believe, unless I misheard by some, that that is inadequate, but it seems that based on, on what you believe, in fact, the 1996 modeling is rather forward-looking compared to the national standards. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, and I think it builds on- Yeah, and I think it builds on that, the information we provided related to the 1996 model, and basically, so yeah, we are currently, we, related to the biological opinion, we currently regulate areas that are outside of technically FEMA's, the FEMA 100-year floodplain, and so that is one of, something that contributes to our 25% reduction in the insurance for people in the city of Portland. But it is a more conservative approach to determining flood risk, and that's why we think it's really valuable for us to utilize. And so we still, we have been since 2000, per the metro requirements, been requiring balance cut fill in both 100-year and the 1996, and we just see this 1996, the new model. And again, going back to what I said, it is our most significant recent storm, and so, and per kind of our FEMA requirements and coordination with them, we call that the storm of record. And so that's sort of, we then have regulations to address that, sort of like most, and Jason can again, speak to this more in detail if necessary, but that is in a, beyond just our FEMA 100-year, we're saying we've adopted this community flood area, which is the 1996. And so the model that we are using is just trying to fine-tune it and make it more accurate as we, thinking about where flooding will happen in the future, so that we understand that as well, given current conditions, because clearly there has been development and have been changes along the Willamette since 1996 and since that map was created.
So 1996 is the most conservative, real-world data you have, and that, that was an exceptional year, obviously, in the last 30 years. Looking forward, there are some who would suggest that weather modeling and whatnot could suggest even more significant flooding. How does that get worked into this?
So Mayor Wheeler, to answer your first question, yes, that is the more conservative, and we feel like the most sort of representative area to be regulating floodplain regulations currently. Going forward, I mean, I think that's what the, FEMA has the responsibility to update the maps, and I mean, I think it's staff's expertise, you know, their opinion, professional opinion, that the FEMA 100-year maps will potentially look more like the 1996 maps in the future, but it could also be even, you know, the boundaries of the floodplain could be even beyond that.
So if, let's say FEMA does its job and they come back with a baseline that is even more conservative than 1996, does that change our modeling?
That, we would be required to recognize those 100-year floodplanes, whatever they may be in the future.
Okay, so if they come back with a more conservative number than our 1996, we will adjust.
That's right.
But your professional guesstimate at this point is that the 1996 numbers are certainly more conservative than the current baseline and potentially will be more conservative than what FEMA comes up with in the future, correct?
That's right.
In which case, the 1996 baseline will remain here in the city of Portland, correct? We won't go back to a, a less conservative standard. Is, is that an accurate understanding?
That's correct.
And then lastly, there were specific areas that, that people mentioned that, that were excluded amongst them, for example, the Johnson Creek floodplain. Could, could you just elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, sure. The reason why Johnson Creek, so there's a lot of work going on, especially from Bureau of Environmental Services and in terms of mitigation banking, she could probably tell you, we could bring, call her up if you want to know more, but, so the reason why Johnson Creek is still waiting, there's, we have done a lot of work for floodplain restoration in Johnson Creek, so it's a remapping of that floodplain is an important thing to do based on those, and I think Bureau of Environmental Services is working to try to make that happen. The other component is the flooding in Johnson Creek is a little different than elsewhere. It's really not so much focused on riverine, so from the Johnson Creek itself, but also stormwater backup and things like that in the area. It's a very large floodplain there, and so the conditions there are very unique. In addition, we regulate it very specifically, the zoning code addresses it specifically, Title 24, the building regulations have specific requirements for Johnson Creek, and so we have, again, in terms of its conditions and characteristics, we've pulled that out because, and they also have, you know, different demographics and things like that, in terms of who we're engaging with and talking to. And so we pulled that out because we think it is a pretty significant relook at all of those regulations and also requires its own attention. So that's why it's the final piece in this phase.
Thanks, I appreciate those clarifications. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Just very quickly on the exchange on the various maps, when we're using the term conservative, I'm concerned that that's going to be misunderstood. Is it, is it fair to say that it's the most protective, right? So it is most protective of wetlands when we're talking about the 96?
Yeah, expansive.
I don't mean a wordsmith, but just when people hear those words, it, I think Commissioner Ryan had a similar.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm referring, of course, to, you know this, I'm referring to baseline and establishing standards that are more stringent than what is currently.
That's right.
Under the federal guidelines. It's not intended as a political statement, just so.
That's a, that's a full clarification.
But you're right, it most certainly would get interpreted that way, wouldn't it? Okay, thank you. Great, any other questions? If not, thank you for the presentation. Colleagues will now move through the amendments. We'll go through them one at a time and vote on each amendment as we go, and I'll turn this over to Commissioner Rubio to re-present the first amendment, which is already on the table, amendment number one, Rubio one.
Great, thank you. Patricia, would you mind queuing up the first slide for the first package?
Yes, Commissioner Rubio, we're going to queue that up for you right now.
Okay, great. That's okay, you can do it. Great, I'll just start. So just as a reminder, these amendments were introduced in city council on August 30th, and they were described by staff, then moved and seconded at that time. And as you may recall, they, they were substantive and technical amendments applicable to the Title 33 ordinance package. And in a moment, I'll introduce two additional amendments, Rubio two and three, which would make a minor but important change to this package. But first, we need to vote on this initial package.
Thanks. Any further comments or questions on Rubio number one? Seeing none, please call the roll on Rubio one.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. Rubio one is adopted. Commissioner Rubio, it's my understanding, then you have three additional amendments.
Yes, thank you. So these are two new amendments this week, which I am introducing as Rubio two and three. These amendments would change the effective date of the key components of the proposal, reducing it from a two-year delay to a one-year delay. The amendment also makes a technical change to properly correspond to the appropriate directives. And I want to thank everyone who provided testimony at the August 30th meeting. We heard a lot of testimony expressing concern about the two-year delay, and while staff had good reasons for the initial proposal of two years, we don't believe that reducing it to one year will harm the balance we sought in the proposal. So I'm happy to be introducing this amendment, which I hope will be well-received by my colleagues.
Great, that's Rubio two. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Maps, seconds. Is there any further discussion on Rubio two? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. Rubio two is adopted. Commissioner Rubio?
And does that encompass?
So then updating the effective date on item 778, we'll call that Rubio three?
Yes, yes. So moving to amend, yeah, to October.
Great. Is there any further discussion on that? Call the roll. I'm sorry, Commissioner Maps.
Second.
And Commissioner Ryan, please call the roll.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. Rubio three is adopted, and then the new section two would be Rubio four.
Yes, so thank you. I have one final amendment that's new. It's a minor technical amendment to add in standard language that was inadvertently left out of Title 24 ordinance. It does not change the code or any of the policies or substance in the proposal, and staff have the precise language shown on the slide. With that, I move to amend 778 and add the severability clause to the Title 24 ordinance.
Seconded. We have a second from Commissioner Gonzalez. Any further discussion on the technical amendment? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. Rubio four is adopted. Thank you, Commissioner Rubio. It's my understanding, Commissioner Maps, you have a friendly amendment, is that correct?
Yes, I do. Colleagues, I, let me start out today by thanking Commissioner Rubio and her team for working with my office to develop this friendly amendment. Colleagues, I move to amend item 778. That deals with Title 24. You can, in a moment, you will be able to see that amendment up on a slide on the screen. While we wait for that to come up, do we have it on the slide?
We have it on Zoom.
We are sharing it, it's not showing on that screen.
Okay, as long as folks.
Maybe we'll share it again real quick and see if that works.
Here's Commissioner Maps.
We were looking to hear, and it was showing, sorry.
Speaking of things that need to be amended, so here we go. This amendment touches on Title 24. That's the amendment up on the slide. This amendment addresses concerns we heard from the public about building along the waterfront without taking steps to mitigate the impact that development will have on flood storage capacity and endangered species. This very much hearkens back to the conversation that Commissioner Gonzalez sparked a moment ago about mitigation banking. Amendment three, as it's language, the ordinance, which acknowledges public concerns about building in a floodplain without taking some mitigation efforts. In addition to acknowledging those concerns, amendment, this amendment consents the city to lobbying the state legislature to fund flood mitigation along the Willamette River and/or to fund a city-run mitigation bank. And with that, that is a very quick summary of the motion.
Very good. So Commissioner Maps moves that. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Rubio, seconds. Any further discussion on what we'll call Maps number one? Just to be consistent, please call the roll.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Rubio.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. Amendment Maps number one is adopted. Colleagues, are there any further amendments? Any further discussion on the amendments? Commissioner Rubio, any closing remarks you'd like to make before we move this on? All right, very good. Thank you, Commissioner Rubio, for your leadership. Items 777 and 778 are continued to October 4th at 2:00 PM, time certain. On October 4th, we'll vote on the revised findings and return with documents that incorporate and reflect the amendments that were voted on here today. The oral and written record will remain closed. That concludes today's business. Thank you all, and we are adjourned.
Thank you so much.